I call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you. Like to observe a moment of silence for the following. Jonathan Mills, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Joseph Salerno Junior, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Barbara Mingle, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Gene Evans, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we have three presentations. The first one is our report from the fire inspection. So I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Crouch and whoever else we have here. Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm pleased to announce that we've completed our fire inspections for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Any infractions that we did find have been corrected, re-inspected the buildings that we needed to. And we all have received our certificates of occupancy for every building. So we are all set for another school year. And that's short and sweet for me unless anybody has any questions.
No, that's what we like to hear. Yeah.
A good one.
Anything major we had, anything major we had to fix or just the standard?
Major, standard little things, doors that weren't closing, quick little tweaks here and there, but it was overall a very good inspection. Okay, great. Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're gonna move right into the safety, district safety planning?
With your permission, yes.
You, you have it. Please go forward.
All right. So I'd like to introduce Mike Bonvell. Mike is our Health and Safety Officer on loan from BOSI. He's with us three days a week. He's done a lot of the legwork this year to really consolidate all of our safety plans across the district. And make a lot of the edits as we move through this year's cycle. So he's going to share the report for everyone today. Joe, can you help us get that presentation up?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me speak to you today. So a very short presentation, not as short as Darren's, but nevertheless, it is important that we do it just to do everything by the books. Thank you. So I'm just gonna be talking quickly about safety planning, specifically our district level safety plan. So what the safety plan is for anyone not familiar, it is a requirement based off of the SAVE Act, which was the Schools Against Violence in Education that passed in the early two thousands. One part of that is that we have to have a district level safety plan. And there's many requirements that come with that, one of which is you have to have a thirty day open comment period, which hopefully we will open today. And that allows the public to review the current draft and then put their input in. The plan itself is in overview. It's a little bit limited on information that would otherwise be confidential, that we save those for the billing level plans. But they, the district plan does include, you know, general prevention and intervention strategies, general response protocols, policies for all of our training and drill requirements. And then communicate, communication information on how families would respond during any sort of incident and how they would proceed from there. Our plan is reviewed by our district planning team and they meet once a year for that as well. It's public knowledge. Our district plan is on our website. It's available. Anyone can view it and we welcome them to. And it provides a framework for our building level plans, which are confidential and those are much more robust and act as our response protocols for any sorts of emergencies. And then the plan is approved by the board each year. So our goals, obviously it's a safety plan, safety is most paramount, but we want to do that by instilling a culture of support, supportive and diversity, inclusion. It's open to anyone in our community. It helps to establish and share strategies to help mitigate, prevent violence, provide support to any individuals. To develop response strategies, remain flexible. It lets us adapt as necessary because no emergency is the same twice. We have to know how to adapt to those changing conditions and also adapt to any regulations, expectations and how to best support our community. And then plan for how to recover, how to continue our operations and any needs after that. And you'll notice, I wish I bolded them in this presentation, but you'll notice I use the terms mitigate, prevention, response and recovery. And that's kind of the basis for our plan. If you look through our plan, those are the sections that we build around. That's really how we are trying to meet our goals for that. So if you'd like to view the plan, our current district plan can be found on our district website. If you go to the facilities tab, go to emergency response plan, you'll see a link at the bottom that says view the plan. You can also click that hyperlink if you have access to this PDF. And then the current draft, which is we're opening the comment period for can be found at that next link, or you could copy paste that link into Google. Either way, you'll be able to find it. And then the major changes for this year. So last year we did a major overhaul. We noticed the plan. It had a lot of content. Every so often, SCD makes new requirements. We just kept, you know, putting new things in to meet those requirements, but it became kind of difficult to read. So we streamlined it. We made it a lot easier to read and it was more cohesive. So with that said, there wasn't a ton of things that needed to be changed this year. But what we did do is we greatly expanded on the cybersecurity section. Jason Clark and his team did a great job breaking things down, what measures are taken to keep us safe with technology. And we also added a section for the district remote instruction plan. Last year, SCD suggested that it was added and this year it's a requirement. So there's a very robust plan that details how the district would perform remote instruction should we have to ever switch to that again. And that was really it for this year. If you would like to make a public comment, it's welcome to anyone. Please do so. You can reach Mr. Matt Irwin by either email, phone, or send mail to his office. And then he, along with Mr. Don Keegan, Chair of the Committee, the Safety Planning Team, and they can review any comments. Next slide, please. And so what happens next? So hopefully tonight you guys open up that thirty day comment period. Any comments will be reviewed prior to approval. If we need to make any changes, we can do that. And then the plan can be voted upon by you guys at the next meeting after thirty days, which I believe will be September twenty-sixth. And then once it is approved, we will add it to the district website. We will submit it to the SED portal and everything will be good. However, this is a living document, although we do approve it, changes can be made, given, you know, experiences or any new challenges we come across. And any comments that are submitted outside that thirty day period, we will review quarterly at the District Health and Safety Committee. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Did I say anything, Matt? No, that's good. Awesome. Well, thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right into our data privacy and security presentation when Mr. Clark's ready.
How's that? Better? All right. So tonight I'm going to talk to you about our data privacy and security update from last year. One thing I want to. There we go. One thing I want to start with is from last year when I was here, we do have a new member of the IT infrastructure team. We hired Ryan Tarson as a network administrator. So all the same folks as we had last year, but we found a rock star in Ryan Tarson. So he's been helping us out on the, the infrastructure side. So I want to start with our roadmap from last year. So last year at this time, I was fairly new to the district and man, it's been quite a year. Who, you know, with Micron and everything that happened and that was announced after this. So last year, this is the last slide from my presentation from last year. And I'm just happy to say that everything has at least been started or fully implemented from this roadmap that I left you with. So we've been looking at the recommendations from our audits from last year when I came in. We're working on implementing all those. We're working continuously on the NIST framework. We have a disaster recovery, recovery plan and we are working on the playbook around that. We continue to move systems to reduce vulnerabilities, so move them to the cloud. And we are always focusing on cybersecurity and monitoring the threat landscape, which is constantly changing. So this year, our big focus is a partnership with MA Polsey. MA Polsey is a cybersecurity group and we have signed on with them for a managed risk and compliance service. So part of that service, we have a monthly cadence call with them to just see, you know, how things are going. So we actually, funny enough, had one this morning. We had our, our second monthly cadence call with them to kind of go through and see how we're doing and see where things are. So we have a, a team of experts from MA Polsey that are helping us just have eyes on what's going on. You know, it's sometimes you, you, you miss what you see every day. And so they're a fresh set of eyes to kind of, rather than just an audit every once in a while. They're working alongside us all the time to kind of point out and say, okay, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? We also have just an hour of consultation. So if TJ or Ryan or somebody needs to ask a question about something they don't know, they have an hour constant consultation. We're constantly working on a security roadmap. And we are constantly doing risk analysis. So, you know, last year when I gave this presentation, we had a lot of stuff that we had to kind of implement and work on. And, you know, now we've got some of those things addressed and we're kind of maintaining, trying to stay ahead of the bad actors out of there, out there. But we're just trying to maintain and stay ahead of the curve and be as current as possible. We also have, along that, we have a vulnerability scan that we're going to do once a month. And just, they're going to help us with all the policy we need to write, all the procedure, not all the procedures we need to write for internal in, on the IT side. And we also have two ninety minute virtual desktop exercises that we have access to. And some penetration tests for up to a hundred IP addresses. So that whole thing, the partnership with MA Polsey helps us work around the NIST cybersecurity framework. So as part of ED Law two D, we need to comply with the NIST cybersecurity framework. So that's the National Institute of Standards and Technology. And as part of NIST, we have to track and see how we're doing in a few different categories that relate to our cybersecurity wellbeing. With that, we're using a tool in partnership with MA Polsey called Sinomi. And Sinomi is a basically a, a place where we get to keep track of where everything is happening. We have, we have a kind of a risk monitoring within there and it gives us really urgent things we need to pay attention to, down to, you know, less important things, lower risk that we can, we can work on. And that, this morning we had our call around that and we, you know, looked at our, our top ten most pressing things that we need to look at, assigned tasks to them, assign people to them and timelines for completion. And prioritize key areas. So this is a, a look at the, what our dashboard looks like. Now, obviously I, I erased all the important stuff because I don't want to present that out to the world. So I erased all the important stuff like I should. And, but this just gives you an idea what the, what the dashboard that myself, TJ, Ryan, that we can pull up at any moment. And it really gives us a real time view of what's happening in our infrastructure. So we can just keep an eye on things. We're, you know, we're constantly trying to, to be proactive instead of reactive with this stuff. The being proactive is definitely much better. So this Sinomi tool is great. We've, we've just started it in July because we had to wait for the coaster to, to come live. So we're very early on in this, but it's a so far from what I've seen, it's a very helpful tool that we're going to be focusing a lot of effort on. As part of this, we also have some of these tabletop activities. So this afternoon, actually, today was a very busy cybersecurity day for me. I started off with a call and ended the day with a tabletop activity with cabinet and Lori Cook, our communications person. So at the time when I made this slideshow, I hadn't actually done this yet. So future me is taking over here. I don't have this in the slides. I thought the tabletop went really well today. So it was all of cabinet and my whole team. And we had MA Polsey actually come in to the DO conference room. And they presented us with a what if this happens scenario? And we didn't, I didn't even know what the scenario was. I told them not to tell me. We had a little, you know, conversation of what we expected, but they truly came in and said, okay, it's eight in the morning on September twenty-first and this happened. And we then organically went from there through the day and everyone in the room communicated back and forth as to what we would do in the case of, and in this case it was a ransomware attack. And it was, it was, it went really well. You know, there's, there was definitely some things that came out of it that we have to, you know, work on and talk about, but overall having everyone in the room, a room full of professionals, it went really well that we were able to kind of pivot and figure out what was going on. So we're going to do more of these fire drills, more of these tabletop activities and really get a feel for, for how best to handle these situations when and if they happen. Good question?
Since you're right on that topic, I'm just curious, you, you work, you work through a model with a ransomware attack. What? What were the responses? If you can share, what you can share as far as that type of attack?
Yeah.
Those are scary. Everything's scary.
It's terrifying. Yeah, terrifying. So it was a combination of two things. So they, they presented my team, the, you know, the folks at the far end of the hall, the infrastructure team with a very early, what if you, like, users are seeing something weird and a call goes into the help desk. And so the, the folks on my team were like, okay, that's strange. And they started thinking about what they would do. They gave us another piece of information. They gave a little bit more clues to what might be happening, more so than just it being something weird. It's, it was something wrong. So then my team discussed what they would do and they had an idea, you know, of what they would do and they started, you know, analyzing things, closing things down and, you know, it, it moved up through to, okay, do we have to cut ties to the internet? And so it, it goes through that progression of what do we do? And then it goes from what they're working on, dealing with a situation to me coming down to the other end of the hall and discussing with cabinet what we're going to do next. And, you know, every situation's different. But it really allowed us to have that conversation where, you know, I, I said, I'm going to be getting my steps in if that ever happens because I'm going to be going, I'm the, I'm kind of the person back and forth between the people that are trying to fix the problem and the people that are trying to communicate what's going on. So, you know, depending on what that looks like, the communication is going to be different. So that's really what the conversation was around was.
No, no, thank you, kid. Cause I, I mean, I've been to a few cybersecurity things and other areas and I just wondered if, you know, everything I've heard is always, of course you want to stop the breach, the penetration or whatever, but, but what is more important is what is your response when it does happen? Because that seems to be the likely scenario. I hate to say that, but that's seems to be the standard out there. So I think these are great that you're doing these drills. I think this is important because the response, I mean, the first is the first level of, you know, defense. So.
And we just wanted to, you know, it, it came to the, we all had very much the same feelings of, you know, we want to communicate clearly. We want to communicate openly. We want to keep people informed. And, and really try to, try to make the best decisions based on this organization, our cybersecurity insurance, the FBI, you know, a lot of people, if, if it is an actual ransomware attack, a lot of people get involved very quickly. So it's, it's trusting the guidance from the professionals outside of this organization and also knowing our district and how, you know, how this district runs and that combination between the two.
Thank you.
Yeah. So from that tabletop and from everything, training is very important. More tabletop activities, you know, just like we have fire drills, just like we have lockdown drills, we're going to do more of these tabletop activities with more folks getting involved. Continued ED Law two D training because we have to as part of that law, but also the more people are involved and informed, the less likelihood of an attack. We were going to increase our phishing training because a lot of these types of attacks happen through somebody clicking on something in an email. So we do have a pro, a system called Mimecast and we're able to do some low, you know, quick. It's, they're actually pretty funny. The videos they've created in Mimecast are actually entertaining. And we're going to start doing some more fish, you know, we send out a, a fake phishing email. And then when, if someone clicks on something they're not supposed to, then they get a notification that they did and they get a, a video to watch. And, and it's very, very low impact, but they're, they're actually, you get to a point where the, the videos are written by former SNL writers and things like that. So they're fun. They're actually not the boring typical security video that you would normally see. So they're, they're well done. So we're going to start rolling some of those out. And then communication, just trying to get more stuff out there because this isn't just a work thing. This is a living in twenty twenty-three thing. You're good. You have just as much likelihood of being attacked by cybersecurity criminals in your personal life as you do your work life. So training people around best practice here also trains them best practice in their actual life. So they don't get their identity stolen or their credit cards, you know, their bank account emptied, anything like that. And the last thing I wanted to touch on is we have, and this is, this is kind of, it, it fits into the cybersecurity, but it also fits just into current landscape that we're in. We've begun discussions around artificial intelligence. If you've paid attention to the news at all, artificial intelligence is here. It's here to stay and it's growing very, very rapidly. So rather than put our heads in the sand and say, la, 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 this isn't happening, we're being very purposeful with how we're treating artificial intelligence and how we're looking at it. We put together a committee of administrators, directors, our tech coaches, some teachers, and we've been just discussing what artificial intelligence looks like in, you know, the K-12 space, what it looks like here. And we have put together a website of resources on our staff page. So teachers can go in, there's a bunch of videos, a bunch of links to resources. And that's actually live right now for anyone in the district that it's on the staff site can go in and see these resources. And we will not be opening this up to students. Okay, we won't, we won't be opening up art of the like chat GPT specifically to students. Because I can't get an ED Law two D agreement with the company that has chat GPT. So I reached out just as a feeler to see if they would be willing to sign an ED Law two D agreement and they're not. So under ED Law two D, we can't legally, under New York State law, open that up to students because we don't, they, they have to log in with their Google credentials and that would be sending their personal identifiable information and we can't do that. So it's really not a matter of if we're opening up or not, it's educating people on how to use it wisely. It is open for staff currently. And it's very new and we're all kind of learning as we go on this, but we're trying to be purposeful in how we, you know, attack artificial intelligence and, and use it and look at it and be educated around how it works. So our tech coaches this summer did four different trainings and almost, we had three hundred and seventy-four staff members in the seats at these trainings. So ready or not, AI and education. Canva is a plat- platform that we use extensively for graphic art creation and video creation. And so they have some Canva baked into, or some, some AI baked into Canva that they did a whole training on. Take time to make time, effective use of technology and computer science and digital fluency for everyone. So each one of those four directly or indirectly touched on artificial intelligence. So I just wanted to share that with everyone that we are talking about it. We're looking at it and more to come. But the website that we have put up there is, is very informative and very helpful. So any, actually, sorry, the roadmap I had, so like I said, we're maintaining now. We've got some really good things in place. We're working to maintain. So we're again, adding in more of the recommendations from MA Polsey. We're leveraging the Sinomi tool to keep track of everything. We're completing our upgrade to the servers. Keep continually reviewing this. It's a never ending thing. NIST doesn't stop. You just try to become more compliant. And so it's a, it's a constant pass and pass and pass and, and try to get as compliant as you can with the guest, the NIST assessment. Again, a big focus on training and monitor and adapt. I, I think I'll probably end every, every one of these conversations with monitor and adapt to the changing landscape because it's always changing. Any questions around any of that?
Yeah, I, I have one question. Um, this is, this is a lot of great information and I'm glad that we're taking proactive approaches. Um, the one question that I had, I know there's a lot of staff training on cybersecurity, which is great. I was wondering, is there anything specific to making sure that when staff are not here, that they are still having a compliance as far as like, you know, I know, for example, where I work, I have my personal email up and also my work email and like, if I do personal emails at home, it can come through. So I have to log out of it and things like that. I'm just making sure. Or like, is there something in the training that is making sure that like personal best practices are being addressed in order to keep the school safe?
Sure. Yeah. So all, well, more importantly, we, we have our side secure and locked down so that that can't really come across. So we've instituted multi-factor authentication. So if you're in the district on our IP network, if you're, any of our IPs on our network, you, you are able, you don't have to multi-factor in, but you are multi-factoring just because you're in a safe. We know where, we know you're here. So if you're on a district computer, there is multi-factor built into the login. If you log in outside of our network, you have to multi-factor so that it's that password plus something else. And so folks have to do that outside of our network so that we know that they're not, you know, it's not somebody in, in China logging into their account. Like it has to be, you know, a text message or using a authenticator app or things like that. So, and then, you know, any of our devices come back through our filters. So any of the Chromebooks, anything like that, it, it'll utilize the home wifi, but it comes back through our filters. So it's not, you're not open to the world. Yeah, you're not open to the world.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So chat GPT concerns me, you know, just on an education level. We can block it all we want. That's not going to stop people from using it at home. I think, you know, or their phones or whatever. Do we have resources available for staff? I know towards the end of last year, when this really exploded, we had a huge influx of students using classwork homework with GPT generated papers and so on. Do we currently have any tools available to help staff go through that to check to see if these things were generated by AI?
A, a lot of those checkers don't work that great. So it, it, I would, I would hesitate putting those out there and having a false positive and having someone be accused of cheating when they actually weren't. Cause for a lot of the, a lot of the, a lot of the, the studies and research and things say that the, the AI checkers aren't great. You know, the AI is smarter than the checker, basically. And I have seen where that's been, had negative repercussions on someone that actually wasn't doing something wrong. And that's the, you know, accusing somebody of cheating when they're cheating is fine. Accusing someone of cheating when they're not cheating, that, that gets, you know, that's bad. So we're going more of the, let's educate people. Let's, you know, let's think about ways we can use it. The, the ways that, you know, instead of, instead of blocking it and, and pushing it away, how can we use it authentically? And help build the, the students understanding. Cause like you said, it's not going away. You know, the, it's, it's teaching them rather than block, like, I'd rather teach them block. So we're trying to teach the, teach the teachers, teach the students and have an open conversation around it's here and this is what it is.
I think it's a great tool. I use it all the time myself. I just wanted to hear that, you know.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have a question. I know a lot of this was staff focused, but do we have anything down the pipeline when it comes to students and cybersecurity and training for them?
Um, so since they don't really have any, you know, they, they have email internally and things like that. The one thing that is going to be a big focus around cybersecurity for the students is the new computer science and digital fluency standards. So New York State has rolled out these set of standards that are to be adopted next school year. So there's going to be a big focus on looking at those standards. And one part, the, the. And one part, the, the cybersecurity and digital fluency standards has five different parts and they're pretty well, they're, they're, they're well done. And they spiral from kindergarten to 12th grade. One of those five pieces is all around cybersecurity and being, you know, basically being a safe adult student, you know, a, a user of technology in today's age. So there is a, a specific focus on that within those standards. So that's where that's going to come in around, you know, cybersecurity, cyberbullying, things like that. Yep. Anything else?
No other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, the Board of Education is going to move into the public comment section. And as usual, these meetings, we do welcome public comment. In North Syracuse, we set aside time for these comments not to exceed thirty minutes when we have ten speakers at up to three minutes per speaker. And as always, again, the Board of Education members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. Issues involving particular students or employees are not permissible topics during the public meeting. An employer or student concern should be addressed to the superintendent of schools during regular business hours. So we'll have one speaker to time with up to three minutes to present his or her remarks. And having said that, most questions related to the schools can be answered by a staff member by calling during business hours. Looks like we have three. We're down to three now. I'm looking at three. I thought we were down to four. All right. So we'll start with Steve Barra or Barra, if I said that correctly, who's like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here tonight really to speak in defense of the board and others in the area. Over the last several weeks, I've been seeing a lot of videos board, town boards being addressed, including this one. Much of the comments seem to be, I guess, of the almost dreaded hater variety. I had three kids go through this district. Two are college graduates now. One is in her senior year of college with a almost perfect GPA. They're all thoughtful, concerned people, each with a good heart. And I'd like to thank the board in this district for the job they did with them, even the one whose senior year was cut off by COVID. A lot of the comments that I've heard complaints still about the shutdowns over COVID and masking and things of that nature. You know, dredging up the past and being really just very short sighted in their comments. What was, what were we supposed to do? You know, send the kids in, infect the staff, infect the students that didn't have good immune systems, et cetera. How many staff would have gotten sick and so forth? So I'd like to ask this board to continue to continue to use its heart. Again, not give in to these things and, you know, do the right thing by all the kids and keep everyone safe. The other big complaint that's, you know, more on the rise now, especially in right wing media, the transgender children and all the, you know, concern about these kids being the next apocalypse. If they're just kids and trying to get an education that this board is charged with providing, occasionally needing to use a restroom while in school. They're just trying to find their way like everyone else. And now suddenly with targets painted on their backs. Just this past Friday in California, a woman was shot to death for hanging out a pride flag in front of her business. That's the kind of consequences this rhetoric can have. It's exceptionally dangerous. I think students these days are worried about being, you know, having their schools number up next on the this month in America's school shooting roulette wheel as opposed to trans kids in a bathroom. So I'd just like to ask this board to continue to be, you know, less hater, continue to show the heart that they've shown over the last several years. Take care of these kids, show them the proper respect that they deserve and hopefully, you know, this rhetoric will ease a little bit before this violence hit home and hits our students like it's hitting elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Colleen Buxton.
I have one girl and one boy. Can you hear me now? I have one boy and one girl who've been in the district from kindergarten to junior high. I exercise my rights as a parent and consider it a privilege to be involved in their classrooms, schools, PTOs and PAC meetings. I've interacted with each of their teachers, principals and the administrators in the district. If I need something or have concerns, I speak up and I'm responded to. I don't always get my way, but I'm always heard and respected. I appreciate and respect every teacher my kids have had. Most of their teachers have been great and a few have been outstanding, loving and kind. I follow my kids' education very closely on Google Classroom. I read the books they're assigned. And I watch what lessons they're being taught and I look over their homework. I'm happy to have a vast array of information put in front of them. Knowledge is power and the more you expose them to, the better they will be in life. If they're uncomfortable with anything, it's a great opportunity for open conversation. The more information you can put in front of my kids and let them see and make decisions for themselves, the better this world will be. Decision making is a powerful tool and it's only my job to guide them and love them, not to make every decision for them. My kids attended Smith Road and I am so glad for the inclusion and diversity that they experienced there. My kids don't look twice at skin color disabilities or where someone falls on the spectrum. They likely have no idea what religion their friends are. I'm proud that individual differences don't faze them and all that matters is how other people treat them. They welcome diversity and I hope they carry that with them forever. I have friends who have freely let their kids explore their own path on gender and sexuality. And all I see are happy, wonderful young people whose parents love them immensely. I appreciate and admire the struggle in letting kids find themselves. And I see the joy that comes from letting the kids be themselves as they develop and grow. It doesn't make me uncomfortable. We live in a big world where gender has become fluid, like it or not. My kids need to be prepared for that and accept individuals as they are as we travel through life. Be at airports, the throughway, the fair, the mall, or anywhere in public, we experience different kinds of people. Our discomfort is not their problem. We share this planet with all types of people and we need to be accepting and kind. I will not let the diversity of an individual scare us. We will only judge people by their actions and I won't make assumptions about someone being more dangerous because of the clothes they wear or if they prefer a different gender than they were born. I'm not going to project the outcome of an individual's intentions or behavior based on anything but their actions. I'm proud of who my kids are becoming and I have to share credit with their teachers and this district. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rob Santucci.
Good evening. My name is Rob Santucci and I'm a Cicero resident, parent of a CNS graduate and grandparent to a current North Syracuse student. I feel compelled to address the Board of Education tonight in response to attacks made by certain individuals who represent a small group of area residents affiliated with the group Moms for Liberty. More on that in a moment. First off, I would like to congratulate you for passing policy five, three, one, one point eight, which supports student gender identity. Your near unanimous vote to protect members of our often marginalized LGBTQ plus students is both laudable and humane. During the past several meetings, our board has been verbally assailed by a few locals who are representing the agenda for Moms for Liberty. This national group of anti-mask and anti-vax parents began in Florida two years ago. And it started to spread its agenda by attacking school boards nationally. Besides being anti-mask and vaccine, their playbook includes being anti-teacher, anti-union, anti-books they don't approve of, anti-mental health care in schools, and most egregiously anti-LGBTQ plus. The research group Southern Poverty Law Center has labeled Mom for Liberty as an extremist group for their activities. We should all take heed of their warnings. I watched these people demand an apology from this board for taking the necessary steps to protect our students and staff during the COVID epidemic, a virus that to date has killed over a million Americans. Many of us have lost friends and loved ones due to COVID. I am here to say that this Board of Education and superintendent have absolutely nothing to apologize for. You followed the science and fought to protect all staff and students. You kept us safe. For that, we are extremely grateful. I've also listened to these same speakers try to accuse this board of being liars, lackeys for the North Syracuse Teachers Union and even socialists. These comments, although considered protected speech under the First Amendment, are both derogatory and demeaning. Moms for Liberty will continue to attack our school board and ultimately our entire school system in an attempt to undermine it, using their extreme political tactics to get what they want. They'll pretend to say they're protecting our students, but this is far from the truth. They will use these children as nothing more than pawns for personal gain. To this group of extremists, I'd like to leave you with a sobering thought. We know what you are. We know your agenda. And the good people of the North Syracuse Central School District will do everything in their power to stop you. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight and thank you for the work you do on behalf of our students and staff. We stand firmly behind you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Board of Education committee reports. I'll just ask is policy meeting soon or have they met?
No, we meet next September ninth.
Kick that up in September and legislative in September, October. Okay. Bosie's report, you have comments on it?
I do have a few. Again, I want to thank the board. This is the beginning of my ninth year as your representative of North Syracuse. But as one of the board members says, we represent all twenty-three school districts that are in OCM. The first thing is kind of very interesting is that section three athletics is now under the umbrella of OCM Bosie's. Just recently, we have a new director of section three athletics, Todd Mulvaney out of the Moravia Central School District. And Jason Zarny from my alma mater, Anadag Central Assistant Director of Section Three Athletics. So Mr. Bernowski will be working with these two gentlemen quite often and their office is in Brittenfield. Another person that we hired, I think Chris will be working with this person and also Lisa Goldberg is Hillary O'Hagan, who will be in charge of MTSS and community schools, which we are very much involved with. Over the summer, there were four hundred and fifty students at Roxborough Middle School from all school districts throughout Anadag County for special education. And believe it or not, secondary summer school, which was run by Bosie's at the junior high Baldensville, Cortland, FM and West Genesee had over two thousand and three hundred students. My last comment is there will probably be a change in the requirements for our seniors. This will be coming out, I believe, in October. The Commissioner of Education, along with the Board of Regents, along with NISIT and other groups, have come up with a plan for new requirements for a senior to graduate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Superintendent comments, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you. Tomorrow, if you've seen some of the fanfare, we will have the start of our new staff orientation. Looks like we have forty-five new staff that will start a three-day training and being welcomed here into the district tomorrow. Mention that we will also be starting next week with kindergarten orientations. So if you have any interest, if you talk to Jill or Chris's secretary, give you the dates and the buildings they're located. I also had the privilege on the sixteenth, which was the second day of what we call band camp. Try to make sure we're recognizing all the different activities. And again, the students that are working hard and marching band is number one in the state, but they usually are practicing from twelve to nine PM during those times of band camp. Long hours, long days out on the turf, doing a wonderful job. And one of the last things I have is one of our own was recognized in the onboard magazine, Lisa Goldberg. She presented at NISBA. She presented on a panel in regard to suicide and suicide prevention and what the district has been doing, what she has been doing. And it not only recognized Lisa, but it recognized North Syracuse as being one of the frontrunners in New York state as far as prevention and trying to provide preventative maintenance. And the last thing is we're still doing some hiring. There's been some last minute moves here and there, but still on it and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Board of Education comments, do we have any today? Yes, Mr. Ludden.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what my colleague, Mr. Merzio was saying earlier about chat GPT. Is that something that maybe we can have a discussion on? I don't know whether it would be in a committee meeting or what. But just to, one, make sure that staff have a prepared way to be able to handle things. And I know, like you said, obviously we can't stop it, but making sure that staff are prepared and how to handle situations and that type of thing moving forward. Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Okay, just, just, I would just inform the board in our last meeting in our workshop, we did talk about a retreat date of November eighteenth. So I'm just reminding you of that. I believe we secured a location. We're still waiting to hear back on the availability of the facilitator, correct? Okay, yes, I'm talking to Jill here. All right. So thank you. Just wanted to inform the board of that. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to routine action items. I'll look for a motion for consideration approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the board on August seventh. Motion of Mr. Thornsec from Mr. Ludden, any discussion? Seeing not all in favor, posed and that is carried. Motion please for placement of disabled students, items B, C and D. If I get a motion from Mr. Thornsec from Mr. Moody Wuzik. So we have B, C and D be front of us, in front of us, the classification of disabled students for in-school, preschool and for home instruction by the committees. As before us, any questions, comments? Seeing not all in favor, posed, that is carried. Thank you. Discussion action items A. Declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus and motion placed at before us, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorn. Any discussion? Seeing not all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Thank you. I'm going, we do have several additions here. I'm going to go through each one, one at a time in case there are any questions, but item B, please, a motion placed at before us. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Dr. Kramer. We have a recommendation, create a one point oh full-time equivalent elementary teacher at Gillette Road Middle. Any questions or discussions? Yes, sir.
Just want to make a comment. Again, thanking Mr. Leahy and Jason and our superintendent. Making sure that our class sizes are lower than ever before and middle school has always been high. Thank you for adding, I believe it's a fifth grade at Gillette. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, any other questions or comments? Seeing not all in favor, posed, that is carried. Item C, please, a motion placed at before us. Motion from Mr. Thornsec from Mr. Ludden. This again, as you create a one point oh, all-time equivalent and special ed, point two FTE and PT and point four FTE speech positions. N S E E P. That's before us. Any comments or questions? Seeing not all in favor, posed, thank you, that is carried. Item D, please, creating point five music at Gillette Road. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Thorn. That is before us. Questions, comments? Seeing not all in favor, posed, thank you, that is carried. Item E, please, motion placed at before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Ludden. That is to create a one point oh FTE reading teacher, split between Roxborough Road and Lake Shore Road Elementary. Any discussion or questions? Seeing not all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And F, recommendation, create a two point oh FTE nineteen and a half hour teacher aides at Roxborough Road. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from nineteen and a half hour teacher aides at Roxborough Road. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing not all in favor, posed, thank you. That is carried. And G, we have a request to approve the district comprehensive improvement plan for 2324 school year. A motion, please. Motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Mr. Herman. That is before us. Any questions, comments? Seeing not all in favor, posed, thank you. That is carried. And a request to adopt the district level safety plan. Motion, Dr. Kramer, sec from Mr. Moody Wuzik. That is before us. We had the presentation this evening. Questions or concerns? Seeing not all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And we have a resolution to establish a tax rate. Could I have a motion, please? Motion, Mr. Crabtree, sec from Mr. Thorne. This is a roll call vote. Yes. Go, it's before us. Go ahead and speak first. Speak, yes.
Discussions first, right?
Yep, yes.
I just would like to remind people, Dan Kitz could be saying this, but remind everybody that when you voted in May, you voted for the school budget, not for a tax rate. Um, it has to go to the town, the three towns, and they have to look at assessments and they have to look at equalization rate. So, um, when you get this bill, uh, in the beginning of September, um, I know they say contact us, but I say contact the towns because they have more of a say on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Ludden?
Yeah, just have a quick question. I did want to confirm and, um, this is mostly because I'm new and I was reading all of this today. I thought I understood it, but I'm not entirely sure I did. Um, I just want to make sure that what I'm about to vote on is that we are doing the, uh, tax increase that was voted on by the people, correct?
Absolutely. We are, uh, we are voting. If you think about the increase, the, uh, increase is the 3.22% um, increase in the tax, uh, levy that the voters approved. Um, and the rate, um, is just as, uh, Bob stated, uh, based on the assessments and equalization rates for the three towns.
Thank you. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that I had read everything correctly before I vote.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead with the roll call. Thank you. Hi.
Hi. Josh Ludden.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you. That's carried unanimously. Motion for Jay, please. Resolution of the authorization of warrants. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. That is before us. Any question or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And K, resolution to approve tax collection deposit agreement. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Ludden. Any questions or comments? Seeing not all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Uh, with the permission, I'd like to group LM, N and O together. If I get a motion for that, motion from Mr. Ludden, sec from Mr. Thorne. Uh, these are appointments that are required. We have the DAS appointments, the school physicians and the advisors, and these are more or less amending or updating the uh, organizational meeting. Thank you, in July, because we've had some new hires and some of these require principals to be appointed. So that is LM, N and O before us. Any questions or comments? Seeing not all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And we have retirement to acknowledge this Lauren Gasek, special education teacher retiring with 32 years of service. I wish her a happy and healthy retirement. Structural personnel report A, if I get a motion to place at before us. Motion from Mr. Thorne, sec from Mr. Herman. A is before us. Questions, comments?
I would just like to say I'm very pleased that one of my former students will now be employed by North Syracuse.
Cool. I'd like it. I wonder if there, you, you must have a number of them, I bet, huh? Or a handful, anyone? Okay. Of other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And a motion to put B, support staff personnel report in front of us for acceptance. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, sec from Mr. Herman. That is before us. Questions?
Just to comment that our transportation, Matt has been working hard on this because other school districts are really struggling as you read the paper. And if you look at the number of people who are hired, thank you, Matt, for doing what you did.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to echo what, uh, Mr. Crabtree said and say thanks to the district for taking care of the staff.
Hey, thank you. So support staff report B is in front of us. Seeing no other comments, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. An administrative personnel report C, motion to place at before us, please. Motion from Mr. Ludden, sec from Mr. Thorne. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And I currently, congratulations to, uh, Ms. Sullivan here. It's the only one here, right? Mrs. Keys? Oh, there, okay. Oh, a new, yes, got it. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to make a motion for executive session. I will ask for a second. The motion is moving for the purpose of reviewing the status of directors bargaining unit negotiations and the NSC bargaining unit member personnel matter. With no action to follow, correct? Okay. So if I could get a mo, a second, second from Mr. Ludden. Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor, posed, and that is carried. And a motion for adjournment, please. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, sec from Mr. Marizio. Any questions on that? Seeing not all in favor, posed. Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:56. Thank you.